Mrs. Severino.
Yeah.
Mrs. Seltzer.
Here.
Mrs. Sharon Celia.
Here.
Mr. Dilkes.
Here.
Mrs. Kayden.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we are going to start off the evening with a curriculum presentation by our wonderful Curriculum Department, kind of taking us through what has happened this year. Good evening, everyone. Miss me, my low voice. Okay, I'm gonna try use my teacher voice. So I'd like to introduce who is here this evening, Mr. Winsor Yamamoto, Ms. Jennifer Floyd, Mr. Sean Kendall, and Mr. Dave Oliveri, who have been instrumental in the process of developing a lot of the work that has occurred this year. And tonight's presentation is all about highlighting everything that has occurred beginning last summer through this point. There will be another presentation in August where all of the final products will be shared through our district website. I'll just, I'm just gonna give an overview of what that website looks like, as well as some other things that I'm going to highlight tonight in the presentation. So, over the course of this year, we focused on several different areas. First was mathematics. Mathematics was not because of a standard revision for the DOE that occurred a few years ago. This is a result of a new math program for grades K to 5 called IntuMathematics. Social studies, across the board, K through 12. We are going to talk a little bit about climate change. Health and PE, also K-12. World Language, and for us, this was particular to American Sign Language for grades K through 5, and also Visual and Performing Arts. So I want to begin by just bringing to attention the CAR framework, which is a model we have been following now for about three years within the district. The CAR framework is a process of curriculum development that we have adopted as a result of some work with a collaboration between NJPSA, NJEA, and the DOE, actually. All three have endorsed this framework as a model for curriculum development. So I want to highlight that at the center of the CAR framework is student learning. And student learning is addressed through all of the networks that you see here in the model. So professional learning communities are at the heart of addressing student learning because during the professional learning communities, we can focus on things like formative and summative assessments. We focus on effective instruction, and of course, we also focus on the standards. So this is all part of the framework that allows us to develop an enhanced curriculum addressing all of those needs, which are previously not in our curriculum development. So I'd like to start with world languages. The New Jersey Department of Education did update the New Jersey Student Learning Standards for world languages, and I am going to put this presentation on the district website, so you'll see links to all those places if you would like to go directly to view the standards in particular. The things that I want to highlight here are that we are making sure that world languages allows for exposure to cultures, different languages, and we are really seeking to make sure that our students live and work in a global, culturally diverse world. As well as, there are goals of world language practices, and I just want to highlight those to communicate. Learners communicate effectively in more than one language in order to function in a variety of situations and for multiple purposes. Cultures, we are able to reflect and learn the relationship between the practices and perspectives of cultures that are studied. Connections, learners use language to investigate, explain, and reflect on the nature of language through comparisons of language and cultures. So you can see there's a repetitive nature to the language and culture aspect. Comparisons, which provides insight into the nature of language. And then also communities, in order to make sure that we are understanding the communities and the globalized world. So as part of our curriculum development this past year, in Collingswood in particular, we implemented a new American Sign Language program. In its first year, it was highly successful. Our new teacher actually developed a curriculum from ground up for all grades K through 5, which was a huge undertaking, and we're really grateful to her for her expertise and supervision of the new program as it got started. It was very successful, it was met with great response, and we hope to see it continue in elementary, obviously, next year, and maybe in the future in middle school and high school. So this slide actually highlights mathematics. And as I mentioned, this is not a result of Department of Ed standard revision, just as a result of the new math program. So in the beginning of the year, I actually highlighted IntuMath as a program that we were adopting, K-5. We began the year with training from the company in order to make sure that we understood the overview of the components of the program. We met in teacher collaboration sessions for professional learning days, and also in PLC meetings, albeit a little bit brief at the elementary level, but there still were opportunities for that collaboration. And then we had ongoing support from the company through coaching. So they had staff professional learners, developers, rather, who came in to teach our staff and work with them both in the classroom and in professional learning sessions to understand the program in depth. The things that I want to highlight are that the IntuMath program has multiple measures of assessment, so we're able to determine student success by a growth measure that is given three times a year. We have noted a lot of progress across the district because of the growth measure, and we will continue to use that as a means of assessment to drive instruction. There are beginning, middle, and end-of-year assessments. These assessments are more focused on standards that are features, sorry, that are similar to high-stakes tests, so things that we would see on NJSLA, for example, as opposed to the growth measure, which is more about standards. And then a summative assessment is offered at the end of each module or chapter that students have, so that we can understand the progress within the math program. Finally, I just want to also highlight there is something called WAGL, and this is an adaptive, personalized practice that is offered to students throughout the course of the day. So after an initial assessment that's taken, there's targeted support to strengthen their skills, and then there are types of assessments within the program that allow students to build on their skills. Health and physical education is an area that we have focused a great deal on this year. We actually did collaborate with an outside organization this year to support our teaching staff in health and PE across the grades K through 12. It did provide professional learning opportunities outside of the district and within the district. And the reason why we chose to partner with Physical Edge is because of the fact that oftentimes during professional development, we didn't have as much targeted opportunity for professional growth for our teams, because we don't have supervisors who are specific to those areas. So this was an area that we chose to focus on by having that collaboration. There are several areas of focus that are within the realm of health and physical education. You'll note those to the left, and everything that is tied in, it's called comprehensive health and physical education for a reason. It's because we really did not want to see, or I guess the DOE did not want to see, a separation of phys ed and health. There is a desire for that to be embedded across the board in what students are doing and focusing on healthy lifestyles throughout the course of their day. The one thing I will note is that in the course of our development for curriculum in health and PE, we did choose to separate out physical education units and health units. And while this is counterintuitive to the DOE's expectations, we certainly understand that the health curriculum is something that parents are going to want to have a more in-depth analysis of in terms of making decisions for their families. So I'm gonna actually highlight that a little bit on this next slide. So in August, when we present the finalized products for health and PE and for all of our areas, but in particular for health and PE, there will be an opt-out process. You may be aware that at some point after the standards were released, there were questions about how families could either participate or not participate, opt out their child in the health program that we were offering. So a link to that broadcast is here for clarification, and we just want to note the statute that's listed. In August, there will be an outline of the opt-out process. There will be an outline of the topics by grade level band. So each grade level or band will have specific topics outlined, so families know what's going to be offered. There will be links to the specific resources that will be used for instruction, so that families can look at that before to make an informed decision, and then the opt-out form and process will be indicated there. Social Studies was another area that we focused on this year, grades K through 12. Again, the link for the standards are up top. The areas of focus were civics, government, and human rights, geography, people, and the environment, economics, innovation and technology, history, culture, and perspectives. And there are several social studies practices, just as there are in every new standard that is developed by the Department of Education. There are now practices, and you can see those here. I want to take a moment to note that one of the things we are going to begin seeing in every single Department of Education initiative regarding standards is going to be climate change. You've probably seen some headlines, there's been a lot of news about New Jersey actually having specific standards outlined for climate change. We are one of the first states to actually offer that. And so that will be embedded in every single content area moving forward. So right now, we see in social studies, it will be in ELA, it will be in math. There will be slight revisions to those areas in the future. They're also embedded in world language. So there is an absolute commitment to ensuring that the concept of climate change in a positive and developmentally appropriate manner is embedded into every single content area. I want to highlight that some of the work that is going to be approved this evening for the summer are several different curriculum crosswalks that are going to occur over the summer. Many of them are aligned to social studies content areas, and then also climate change. So the purpose of those crosswalk projects is a result of some of the feedback we received this year. Working with our supervisors, working with some of our teachers, what we wanted to ensure was the items that we are teaching regularly during the course of the school year are highlighted in external document that can be seen. So across the board, those curriculum development projects are going to be approved this evening, and that's work that's going to occur this summer. Crosswalks will be completed by August and will also be available during the August meeting that I'll be presenting at. And finally, this kind of comes full circle. So as part of that CAR framework, one of the things we have noted was the need for assessment and ongoing improvement as a result of the assessments that we are using within the district. So for example, the IntuMath growth measure assessment, assessments that we're using in all content areas. So we, as a team this year, met with principals and assistant principals to really talk about the data that we have in place. Our goals were to ensure that data was seen as a tool, that it was useful and digestible, and that we are making data-driven instructional decisions. So during the course of our time together in our meetings, we were able to review the data we saw and link the Connected Action Roadmap to that process of data discussion. So you'll note some pointed questions that we discussed during our time. Trends of growth, why is growth occurring? So we wanted to really make sure that we were celebrating all of the accomplishments at each school, and there were many accomplishments. We wanted to note where there might be lack of progress, and also which students in particular might be in those areas that are listed to make sure that we are addressing each student's individual need. And finally, as a result of those meetings, each team at a building, which was comprised of principals, instructional coaches, intervention teachers, or learning acceleration specialists, gathered together to identify SMART goals for intervals for next meetings. I just want to highlight on the right, we did ask for teams at each building to really give a reflection of what the meetings meant for them. And so we took those concepts and information that we received in order to continually develop and enhance our meetings that occurred this year. So that's just some actual comments from our administrative team and our coaches, learning acceleration specialists. One of the things I just really would like to note is that without the hard work of this team, those meetings would never have been so successful. So I am grateful to all of you for ensuring that the meetings were extremely driven in terms of the goals, that they were opportunities for celebrating and highlighting all the accomplishments that students and teachers were making. We really wanted to celebrate, and then also that we were making sure that the information everyone had was clear and concise and actionable right away. And so those are some of the comments we got in terms of feedback. And we are happy to see the positive information and happy to enhance our data team meetings as a result. And that is all I have. Sorry, didn't want to be blinded by the... So, thank you, Ms. McPartland. First, I wanted to say, check in if anyone had any questions for Ms. McPartland about the current presentation. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cartland, and thank you to everyone on the team. I had a question about communicating some of the results, particularly from the IntuMath assessment. There was some confusion around the communication of that to families. And so I just wanted to know if there was a plan that your team had for communicating the results or ongoing growth from those assessments to families in a digestible, easy-to-understand way?
So we did send home growth measure results. We did have a cover letter for that information. We did have some goals new this year, so I think that perhaps there may have been some buildings who got information a little quicker than others. But there was a process that we had discussed, and we'll make sure to refine that for next year. Thank you.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
So when you mentioned the world languages, I may have missed something, I'll be very frank. But all I saw was Spanish and American Sign Language, so German and French. Were they, was there a reason that they're not, didn't participate, or was there...
Yes, so actually, grades 6 through 8 were put on hold until the summer because we had our Spanish teacher was out on leave last year. So that work will be ongoing this school year with some updates. And then there were some curriculum development areas at the high school, particular to levels 1 and 2. Levels 3 and 4 will be updated this summer. So it's kind of ongoing, because we only typically have one teacher who teaches that. So it's a heavy lift to do all that curriculum development over the course of one school year. So that work is ongoing throughout the school.
So what was up there was just for American Sign Language?
American Sign Language, that's correct.
Okay, I misunderstood that. I thought that was American Sign Language. Okay, got it, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
For the data team meetings, when you talk about creating SMART goals, are those like the teacher, grade level, subject level goals? Or are they more student-specific goals?
The SMART goals we established this year were actually twofold. So there were building-based goals that we established, or the teams, I should say, established as a result of our meetings. And then there were goals specific to students who either needed additional support or were really starting to notice some areas that they needed to be excelled in.
So it would be during those data team meetings that, say, individual students would potentially be identified for additional supports or that they would need?
Yes, that actually was part of the discussion we brought to light during the meeting, students that we noticed in terms of trends and data in both areas. And as a result of that, after the meeting took place, where we kind of digested all that information, action plans surrounding SMART goals were developed.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Ms. McPartland? Well, just thank you very much to you and your team, and we look forward to hearing more about the progress that was made at the August meeting. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was our only presentation for this evening, so moving on to Section 4, Committee of the Whole. I need a motion to enter Committee of the Whole. And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, so the topic for Committee of the Whole is not budget update. We will update that, that time has passed.
I did delete it online, so sorry. We went through this agenda.
Excellent, it was deleted online, so that's good.
And we missed it.
So I just wanted to wrap up a few things about this school year and then have one thing that we can all discuss, because we have not had the opportunity to, and I would like to get that moving over the summer. So first, just very briefly for the board, you know, we know we're going to be planning to work with Dr. McDowell throughout the summer to co-create our district and board priorities or goals for next year, as well as the Policy Committee will be trying to workshop some policies that have been harder to get to with the busyness of the school year. And then I emailed everybody to remind them of our next DI workshop is the Saturday, the 15th of July. All of that is kind of our end-of-year wrap-up things, plans for the summer. The other thing I wanted to talk about as an actual discussion topic for Committee of the Whole this evening is something that we've been trying to figure out how to make work, probably almost for my entire tenure on the board. Fiona's shaking her head, yes. Is how the board can engage with a community in ways that are more than just public comment, but also not, "we ran into you at a school or a community event and are gonna talk to you there." So a more formal way of having community engagement that doesn't ask all of us to be at the same place at the same time, which gets complicated. And so here's my proposal for us to discuss. We set a date and time each month, so whether it's the fourth Thursday of every month, I'm just making that up, it doesn't have to be that, something like that, at a set location. I had had the idea of the library, thinking about, you know, that's an evening place that's central in town, that I know from other things I've done, is something that's fairly easy to reserve that time each month. And only do, have about two board members, two different board members, so it's not the same two that are committing to the entire year of giving up yet another evening for board work, but we rotate it so that in theory, we would all maybe only have to do one or two months, and we're still meeting with the community, but, you know, managing our own time commitment as well. And so what I wanted to talk tonight about was, because I got pretty positive feedback from everyone thinking, "oh, something like this is a good idea." But it's more how to do it, how to structure it, because I think it's important that it not be, "hey, entire town of Collingswood and Oakland and Woodland, just come talk to us at the library about whatever comes to mind at that moment," because we're not necessarily going to be prepared to answer every and all question, and it would be very frustrating if everyone comes and asks us, and all we say is, "we're gonna write down notes and move on, because we can't answer those specific questions." So coming up with some kind of a structure, ideas that I had were something like creating some sort of a Google form that the week before folks could say, you know, "here's something that I've been wondering about," or, I mean, we could even collect it throughout the month, and we kind of have a list of things that we could, those two board members that are up that month get more info about to be able to know either what's going on with that particular topic and how they can answer it, who they can direct folks to if they're feeling that they don't have the answers themselves, and somehow setting up parameters similar to the way like a PTA or a CPAG would, that if you're coming to discuss a specific issue with your own child, this isn't the place for it. That's not the appropriate location, we can't talk to you about specific issues with your child, with specific teachers, or any personnel, stuff like that. So I'm gonna throw my idea out there and then see what everyone else thinks about that, and setting up some clear structures for how to make this doable for all of us, and something that the community feels like is worth it.
I think it's a great idea, and we have been talking about this for years, and, you know, COVID got in the way. But I have a suggestion that I think to make it more, you know, accessible to the community, that some of us have more flexible work arrangements, maybe we could do one month during the day for people whose kids are in school, and they'll be more easily able to make those times.
That's an excellent point.
To the issue of accessibility, perhaps providing a virtual option as well might be something to consider.
Are you thinking of virtual option for every month, or similar to that kind of rotating options?
I think rotating options would be good.
Just go ahead.
I think it's a great idea. Maybe we could offer a couple different locations, too. Like one month we can meet at the library, maybe we find another meeting place as well around town if we're accessibility.
In addition to a Google form, which I think is a good idea, maybe we could also think about broad themes for a monthly meeting. You know, something that is coming up a lot that we've heard, or something coming up in the next month. So in addition to some specific questions, it could be like, if you have questions about X, you know, we're gonna be talking about that this month.
So that's something, I was thinking about that, too, almost the equivalent of like hot topics for the month, without being quite that cheesy. But that we could either announce, whether it be in the communication that reminds folks that it's happening, or at a board meeting, depending on the timing of it all, probably that wouldn't work. So it probably would be the communication about it, that just, here are the topics that we will have some updates on, in addition to the community-specific questions that might come up. So I was thinking about this with locations, because we've had this same discussion actually about board meeting locations, and wanted to get kind of everyone's take about that. The discussion when it kind of came to board meetings, because the suggestion was to sometimes move those around, was the last thing we wanted was for people to be confused about where to go if we're switching it up every month. But I don't know, if we found maybe two specific locations and we went back and forth, maybe that would be less confusing. You know, one could be, we could see if we could get like the community room at Parkview and the library. Those are two kind of pretty set locations, and go back and forth, because we're all already doing, maybe like the ones that are during the day are at one location, and the ones that are in the evening are at the other one. So that's an easier thing for everybody to always remember.
I was just gonna say that, why don't you do daytime one, obviously, camp on campus.
Daytime one is at one place, yeah. Yeah. Anybody can talk, I'm just writing, so I don't forget these things. Because if I don't put it down on paper, I won't remember it.
Will we draw straws for budget month, see who has to go with budget? But then, are these conversations, are these us sharing updates in person? And sometimes it can be frustrating, because there's things we can talk about and not.
Right.
So what is the ultimate goal for people, if somebody's gonna come out to see us, what would they be hoping to get out of this?
That's a good question. I don't necessarily have the only answer. I think, I think I was trying to find something in between that, right? Like we can't, if the community is looking for us to give them information that they know they can't get from us, then it would be a fool's errand, right? That, you know, we're not going to discuss any, you know, student performance, not individual student performance data, we can discuss general. So it would be perhaps having, coming, we could come up with some sort of a statement that is similar to, I know CPAG has one that they read like at the beginning of every meeting that makes that very clear, like, here's what we are here to do, and here's what we're not here to do. That we're here to talk about how we can, you know, the issues that are affecting all of our students. And so I guess that a lot of that is updates, and also if it's suggestions, if it's, here's something that has been, you know, going on at one of the schools, and we wanted, the community wants to make sure... community wants to make sure the Board's aware of it," that's a place that we can not necessarily give our individual opinions about whether we think whatever's happening is correct or not correct, but we can have that knowledge. The community can feel like they have a space to share that with us without having to know us personally or know our, or send it to our board email where we can't really give, it's not a conversational response, and, you know, we can troubleshoot, you know, who to direct those things to in a, you know, like a quicker manner than often, I think, can happen over email. I don't know if that was very clear in an answer, but I'm still thinking this through, obviously.
I've gone kind of back and forth on this, because I think I was one of the
You were.
Yeah, I was one of the ones who sort of thought this was a very good idea. And not to give Clinton too much praise, because in case he's watching, I don't want him to get a big head. But his big thing when we would bring this up would always be, would always be, the public does, the community does have a space to come and talk to the Board, and that is a board meeting. And I do, I would always push back and say, "Yes, but the smaller is better because you can get into a conversation," and I still believe that, but I think that if we are going to do this, there has to be a very clear purpose. Like, so, the last thing that you just said, Reagan, in terms of like, if people want to come and share ideas with us, or they want, you know, community members who all have, you know, good ideas, things are happening at their school that are great, things that they think could be better, like, that, I think, is, to me, would be
More constructive.
That's what I think it would be, because if they just want to come and hear what's happening at a board meeting, then they could just listen to a recording, right? You know what I mean? Like, or get an update that way.
Yeah.
So, and in turn, and I don't know, like, not that they couldn't come and ask us questions, of course, they could come ask questions, and we could kind of point them in the right direction or give them someone's email, like, I'm not saying they can't, but to me, that feels like a better fit for this type of a thing. But that's just me.
Yeah, so, kind of share ideas or of how to, areas for improvement, things that have been going well, that could perhaps translate to a different school, as well as troubleshooting issues that do come up, whether it's in their own school community, their kids, if we're talking more high school, middle school, their kids' like friend group, that, you know, they're like, "Oh, all of them are having this issue in school. Perhaps that's something that we could look into more, and here's an idea I have." That sort of thing.
Because we're all just sitting here, but they're all, they are all out there having the same experiences with their kids. Bring them to us, you know, like, and then, you know.
And then, we can kind of filter that through to the
Right. And then, there could be some positive changes that could take place.
And I was also just thinking, because I know Clinton would always say that, and while he is correct because of the nature of our board meeting, and I know you know this, so I'm kind of preaching to the choir there, that the no conversational back and forth can be very frustrating. And this felt like perhaps a way to have a bit of conversation in a, you know, because it's nice to talk to folks that have some great ideas about, you know, ways we could better the schools, and some of them will work and some of them won't, but that's okay, you know? And I figure we just give this a try, and, you know, if I am not, I'm humble enough to be able to admit if an idea doesn't work once we get it started, and if it turns out that, you know, we're getting the feedback that this feels like a waste of time, or we're sitting there just talking to ourselves, then we can, you know, revamp and see what might work better than that. Go ahead.
Playing off what Mary said, I think that's a great idea, that, like, the format's a little bit better. So, timing-wise, maybe it would be productive to think about having it the week before our committee meeting, so that the people could share with the feedback with the whole group, and if there's some action item, we could give it during the board meeting the next week, maybe that'd be helpful.
That's a great idea.
I think the opposite, I don't think we should
No, no. The timing. That's okay.
The timing, I was also going to say about the timing, but I think it should be less structured, because it's an opportunity for people to meet with us when we're not bound by these, and we are bound by something, but this formal setting. And a lot of times, people might not know what category does my question fit into, who do I go, and this is an opportunity just to show up and say
To be a bit more informal about it.
And if we can't answer it
We just say that.
Because I wouldn't want to have themes so much that it becomes almost scripted, or, you know, we could send out an information sheet for that, you know? So, I think the less structured, the better, and, you know, if the point is really to build relationships with the community, then you can do that.
I think it's a very good idea, and I think taking everybody's ideas into account, move forward, and you don't troubleshoot, you know? You don't have to have it all figured out, like, going in, so I think that's a great idea.
I was just going to say, I think it's a great idea, too, and to the point that Fiona was just making, I think if you're going to use something like a Google form or the BOE email address or what have you to kind of see what the hot topics, as you put it, are for that month, then if there's something there where we would, if there's something there that could be more structured
Yeah.
We would have an opportunity to put out communication about that without detracting from this time of engagement that we would have with the community. I mean, it would actually maybe open up other avenues of communication as well.
So, am I hearing kind of we're doing both, not necessarily using them for the same purpose, like, not saying that Google form then becomes the only topic for these more informal meeting times, but it helps to inform what might be useful to have during those discussions, but also what we can discuss in committee meetings, what we could perhaps discuss at a Committee of the Whole meeting or ask for a presentation on or something like that? Am I hearing all of that correctly?
That's, that's yes.
Excellent. All right. Go ahead.
I think that it makes sense to try this, because it can definitely be really frustrating, right, to be up here and say a bunch of stuff and then not get even like, "Oh, yes, okay, yeah, like, I hear you," type of response from like a normal conversation. I can imagine, just trying to think through how one of those sessions might go, I could completely imagine someone coming with a very specific issue that they need help with, and understanding that our charge is to be, is to, our requirement is that we have them go through the correct chain of command.
Right.
I think it'd be really helpful for, if we could have a guide in terms of like, who's responsible for what, where to point people, because sometimes
They had that written down. We'd have a whole, like, little thing to be like, "Here's our, here's who we reach out to for various things for ourselves as well"
Exactly, for ourselves, right.
To be able to give people the right information.
And I would imagine for some folks, it might just be really helpful to be able to have a conversation with someone who can just be like, "Okay, I hear you there, like, this is how you should reach out, who you should reach out to, et cetera," and if we can help provide that service to support the district, I think that's also really helpful.
Yeah, and I think we're, I'm confident that this Board is very clear about what our role is and what our role isn't, and so can help folks navigate that in a way that I hope would be considered productive. All right, so, I will put all of this together and then send out some more info to you guys so that we can hopefully launch this sooner rather than later. I don't know that anybody's probably paying all that much attention for July, so perhaps we shoot for August, or even September, depending on what we all kind of think makes sense for the summer. But at this point, because it is, you know, the June meeting, that was kind of the only stuff I had for Committee of the Whole for today. So, on that note, I need a motion to exit Committee of the Whole. And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Moving on to section five, future dates and miscellaneous information. The Summer STEAM program is happening in July, as well as the ESY Summer Program, and then from August 7th to the 10th is our Transition Camp, that if I am correct, is for incoming sixth graders and ninth graders. Section six, Routine Business, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the May 22nd, 2023 regular board meeting and the June 15th, 2023 special board meeting. Wait, do I do that? Are we also doing the contracts?
Yeah, we missed another boo-boo in the minute.
Oh, jeez.
I know. I'm slipping, I'm sorry.
That's all right, that's all right. So, so, we're going to do that, plus there's also, do you want to tell us what the report of contracts is, Ms. Coleman?
Yes, this is the annual report of all the contracts that, even though I bring them to you every month, statute says in June, "I summarize all the contracts that have been awarded on your behalf with an estimate value," so that is attached for your reference.
Okay. So, we're looking for approval of items 6.01 and 6.02 this evening. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Do a voice.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are at our first opportunity for public comment. The purpose for this public comment section is to address items listed on tonight's agenda. Additional more general comments may be made later in the meeting. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. The intent of public comment is to give the community the opportunity to provide feedback to the Board. We will be actively listening and taking notes that we can take all that is being said into consideration. If appropriate, clarifying comments may be made at the end of the public comment section. For more detailed responses to concerns, communication may go out later in the week by the appropriate staff members or administrators, or be discussed by the Board during future committee meetings. Members of the public are welcome to speak and expected to do so with the utmost sensitivity for everyone in attendance. In fairness to all who wish to speak, there is a strict five-minute time limit per person during public comment. Please come to the microphone and remember to state your name and address for the record. I'm thinking we should remove the microphone. Going to move the microphone real quick.
Hi, Wayne Rossi, 114 East Palmer. Yeah, I appreciated today's curriculum presentation. The one thing, and I know I might sound a little broken record here, but I do feel like there needs to be more content, you know, I, so, I appreciate that there's content on climate change, and I think that that's great. I also think that there does need to be an improved focus on diverse racial history in the U.S. and on racial subjects. You know, I think we've heard that that doesn't seem, if, you know, what's there doesn't seem visible enough, as I've seen it, and I think that it needs to be brought out both in ways that are visible and ways that are really contributing to an improvement in the atmosphere at the schools. I know, I felt like the Juneteenth Festival was fairly successful, and I know that there was an educational component of that. I think that's great. I think, like, really having like a strong program, you know, next year, 2024 Black History Month would be really great to see, but that that's not only a one-month thing and that I think it's an important part of curriculum development, an important part of the ongoing commitment, I think, that we need to have to building a better environment for students, so that students who aren't white, right, can see themselves reflected in curriculum, can see people like themselves in the, in the subjects, their subject matter they're presented, and that that's a big part of what we need to do going forward. And like I said, if there's already things that are in this direction, you know, I do think that more transparency and clarity on that would be great as well, but I wanted to encourage that. Thank you.
Okay, it doesn't look like anyone else is standing up, so that means that we are moving on to the superintendent's report.
So, good evening, everyone. Before I get started, I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the passing of Ryan Rogers. Ryan Rogers was a Collingswood High School class of 2022, and it is our understanding that he passed away due to a fatal car accident. So, our sincere condolences go out to his family. We do not have details. As more information is made available, we will circle back, but we wanted just to take a moment to acknowledge Ryan at this time. We also wanted to thank, as Mr. Rossi pointed out, Saturday, June 17th, was our Juneteenth Unity Day celebration. This was in partnership with the school district, the Collingswood Borough, and the DEI Community Group. Throughout the week of June 12th through the 16th, we honored and celebrated Juneteenth with a focus on unity. We also collaborated with the Collingswood High School Black Student Union, as well as the local DEI Committee, to develop a schedule of events for this first-ever celebration of freedom. We'd like to especially thank our curriculum leadership team for supporting and partnering with the various groups in order to introduce a whole host of educational activities to our students, as well as special thanks to the Borough for their above and beyond coordination around the event, specifically our DEI Community Group and all of the volunteers, as well as the local businesses for their participation, who made this event a success. On Tuesday, June 20th, the SHARP PTA and the school community celebrated their end-of-the-year annual Black Top Bash. Community members enjoyed food trucks, carnival games, music, face painting, balloon art, a SHARP photo booth, and much, much more. We'd like to thank our SHARP PTA and all of the volunteers who made this event and fundraising activity a success. We would also like to announce that Collingswood Public Schools has been awarded the School-Based Mental Health Services Grant in the amount of $225,000 for the next five years. The intent of this School-Based Health Services Grant is to support eligible school districts in the recruitment, placement, hiring, and retention of school-based mental health professionals. Through this grant, our school district will be able to train new and existing mental health providers, expand a pipeline, and increase the diversity of high-quality trained providers while addressing shortages in this area. Overall, there were 11 districts in the state of New Jersey that were awarded this prestigious grant, and we'd like to especially thank our grants team for continually working to bring in new resources to support our students. As mentioned earlier by our Board President, the Collingswood Connect Summer Academy will be for all rising sixth and ninth grade students. The secondary program focuses on building relationships, as well as team building, as we seek to focus on a culture of connectivity for our rising students as they transition out of elementary and as they transition out of the middle school into the high school. Feeling connected is important, and students will have the opportunity to get to know each other, along with teachers and staff members. They will follow a camp-like schedule, they'll be able to participate in multiple educator-led activities in small groups, in addition to coming together for main events, and the program will conclude with a whole group celebration and all of the students leaving with new connections and new mentors that will ultimately welcome them back to school in September. There is no cost for students. The events will take place the week of August 7th, and it'll be offered from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Initial information about registration has been sent out, and it will be sent out again tomorrow. When we look at our enrollment report, section 8.01, May of 2022, enrollment was 2245. Enrollment as of May 2023 is 2255 with the enrollment reports attached. 8.02 is our school's safety and emergency drill report for the month of May. 8.03 is the suspension report for the month of June, and 8.04 is the harassment, intimidation, and bullying report for June, and that concludes my report.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. We have one more announcement. My apologies, Mr. Rozell. Mr. Rozell is one of our career and technical teachers, and the senior class was able to donate a departing gift, and they made a free library that'll be used within the community. And so, we would like to thank Mr. Rozell as the teacher, as well as his senior students, for their woodworking skills, and the free little library is in the back parking area for individuals to be able to take a book, leave a book, love a book, or keep a book. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. McDowell. Thank you, Dr. McDowell. Moving on to, to Section 9, the Business Administrator Board Secretary Report, Ms. Coleman.
And Item 9.01 is the listing of your May budget transfers. 9.02 are your financial statements, your Board Secretary, Treasurers Report, and Cash Reports. 9.03 is your student activity cash report. 9.04 is your May food service report. 9.05 is the listing of the purchase orders for the month of June that have been issued. And 9.06 are the checks that will be paid tomorrow morning, pending approval this evening. I just want to note, we are closing down the books, so probably mid-July. Expect an email from me once I get, like, all the invoices and everything's closed out. I'm going to do one final little mini bill list to close the books. So typically what I do is I'm letting the new board members know. I'll send an email out to all the board members, "Here's the bill list, please review it. I give you, like, 48 hours, and then if I don't hear any questions or complaints, then I, I send out the checks," just so I can close the books. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Section 10, the Buildings, Grounds, and Finance Committee, Mr. Craig.
The Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee reviews all financial statements, purchase orders, and warrants on a monthly basis. Committee also reviews and approves all contracts with outside service providers and oversees all maintenance and capital improvement projects district-wide. Tonight, we are seeking approval for the following items. 10-3 to 10-9 is the Board Secretary's report, as was just presented. 10-10 is a resolution, procedural, to put through if we are going to go out with referendum. We have to put in and purchase the Good Shepherd Building. We have to file this with the state. So this is just getting our ducks in a row before anything happens either way there. 10-11 is approving Inspira to do substance abuse screening for our schools next year. 10-12 is real-time information technology, continuing to use this program or this company for special education program for filing reports and IEPs. 10-13, Gloucester County Special Services Agreement for as-needed professional services. 10-14 is approving to go out to bid to resurface the basketball court behind the high school. 10-15, a resolution approving the Business Administrator to make reserve account deposits. 10-16, issuing an RFP for online synchronous French instruction. 10-17 is approval of JIF surplus funds of $13,274. 10-18 to 19 are amendments to the IDEA grant, reallocating spending line items, but not the amount for the '21, '22, and '22, '23 school years. 10-20 is grant application approval, allowing Sharp Elementary to apply for funding to plant trees on their campus. 10-21 is acceptance of the ESEA grant. 10-22 is approval and payment of the Juneteenth slash end-of-school-year celebration presentations that were made. 2023, invo healthcare associates for PT services at a reduced rate. 10-24, Tia Hinson-Harvey providing learning assessment services over the summer. 10-25 is Laurel Therapy OT Services during the ESY program. 10-26 and 10-27 are both Rowan University for MSW interns for next school year and student internships for the next school year. 10-28 to 10-30 are shared service agreements, first with Barrington for shared maintenance, then shared comm service with Haddon Township, and then with the Borough of Oakland for shared services around trash removal. 10-31 is a contract with Stewart Xerox for desktop printers and supplies for the schools. 10-32, approval to dispuse, approval to dispose of several outdated textbooks, Band Department. 10-33 is a donation of a silver-valve trombone from Joanna Magna. Thank you to Ms. Magna. And then 10-34 is a use of facility requests for the Collingswood Book Festival. So, seeking approval for Items 10-2 to 10-34.
Do I have a motion to approve, wait, we got to do it this way. A motion to approve said items? Second? Questions or comments from board members?
Okay. If, if, if Mary and I are on the same page, it's about 10.16, the RFP for online synchronous world language instruction. Can you just say a little bit more about that for us?
Oh, did Mr. Oliveri leave? Okay.
No, our big question was if, I know that it's, it's difficult to find a long-term substitute for French, and that's been the struggle, but does this, are we able to continue looking for a French teacher?
Yes, the long-term sub-French position is still open.
Okay.
It's remaining open, but we need a plan for September.
So it's essentially a backup plan if we cannot find?
Correct, and we need to plan it because Ms. Briggs is going to be out all year.
Right.
And would the, would the synchronous component be, there would be a live teacher? Would there be, like, what kind of programs?
I believe that, if I'm, I'm looking at, Jen. I believe the, like, the kids will be on their laptop, their laptops. The teacher, wherever they are, somewhere in New Jersey, New York, will be teaching, and then there will be an adult in the room. So there'll be an instructional assistant, just like, helping out and monitoring everything. If that kind of gives you a picture.
Have the families and kids been notified that this might be a possibility?
Prior? So at the moment, notification hasn't happened because we're still trying to work that out with staying positive that a, a person can be found. But once it gets closer to that timing, notification to those taking French for this school year will be given.
With enough time that they could possibly choose a different?
Oh, I don't think they could do that.
They cannot?
I don't know about that.
No, I'm just, I'm just asking a question.
I don't know if scheduling-wise and that, how easy that would, I guess it would depend on the number to write. If everyone in the French program?
I'm not saying that everyone went up.
No, I know.
I'm just saying if you had a child who doesn't do well on a computer.
Sure.
That, that's all I was saying.
No, and I, I don't know that we know the answer to that at this point.
Got it.
It's an un, it's, yeah, it's an unfortunate situation that we're in with this year. So, because she's not mic'd, Ms. McPartland, no, I'm trying to help the, you know, anyone that's listening, or that if, for students that have fulfilled the language requirement, so I'm assuming that means if they're in French III or IV, for instance, and learning online isn't going to, to be ideal for them, accommodations would be made to, to find an alternate placement for them, for that, that class, doing something else. For anyone that is on track to fulfill their graduate, their language graduation requirement with French, meaning that they're probably taking French II, that's trickier. They kind of are going to need to stick with that in order to fulfill that two consecutive years, right? You're the one that's talking to this, of a, of a language that?
Well, actually, to be, to be, to be college-ready, you need two consecutive years. So then they would need to continue on in that, so.
Right, that's what she was saying.
Right, so then, yeah, so then I guess.
Those kids unfortunately don't have an option to change. We'd have to try to give them, I guess, this extra support.
Yeah, and I guess as much notice as possible, once, if that becomes. Hopefully we'll.
Hopefully we find anyone out there that knows of someone that's looking to just teach French for a year.
And the reason it's, and the reason it's an RFP is the expected cost, if we went this route, exceeds my authority as the purchasing agent. So the cost would exceed the $44,000 limit that I have. So I just can't sign the contract and book them now. I have to see if there's anybody else there, out there that I can do a cheaper. So, that's why. Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Craig, I have a question about real-time renewal of contract. Would you just be able to explain this a little bit more? I'm, I'm seeing 504 scheduling and, and IEP writing. Is this something that?
We already have it, first off, and they are the, that's the software that the Child State team uses. So they do their, they, when they write the child's IEP, and they do their evals, and their re-evals, this is the software that they use. And then it talks to Genesis to get all the information in. And it also works with the state's semi Medicaid program that we have to use to get our reimbursements. So it's just a software that they use. You're welcome.
10-24, Tia Hinson-Harvey, is that for IEP, is that for IEPs? What services?
Yes, she will be, sometimes, Child State, they do work over the summer, working on IEPs, but stuff comes up over the summer, and in order to not postpone a child's IEP, they, sometimes they have to outsource it. So this is as needed. We also contracted Camden County Ed Services Commission, but my understanding from the Child State team is the last couple of times they've called in the summer, they, they weren't available to send anybody, so they need somebody else kind of as a backup. So it's only as needed.
Any, any other questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Ms. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan, Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Delkis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes. Moving on to Section 11, the Curriculum Committee, Mr. Chu.
The Curriculum Committee oversees and approves the district curriculum and assessment programs, as well as field trips, home instruction, co-curricular programs, and school calendar. Up for approval tonight is 11.02, which is five-hour district home instruction placements, and then additional district placement in 11.03. 11.04 is the approval for the fall, Middle School Fall Musical, which is Disney's Newsies Junior, and those performance days are December 7th, 8th, 9th, in the direction of, sorry, Mr. Hartung, Mr. Gross, Ms. Goodall, and Mr. Jackson. 11.05 is another extended school year alternative, Camp Sunnyside. And then 11.06 is the 2023-24 comprehensive equity plan statement of assurance. And so that is basically a extension of, of the current plan, if I remember correctly, right? The, the county or the state is allowing us to extend our current plan, and so this is just a statement that we are continuing with that plan. And so I'm seeking approval of items 11.02 through 11.06.
Motion to approve said items. And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Ms. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan, Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Delkis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes. Section 12, the Personnel Committee, Ms. Sheridan, Celia.
The Personnel Committee reviews all recommendations for teaching and staff employment, considers co-curricular employment, and considers all professional development opportunities for staff members. We have a lengthy agenda tonight, so I'm going to be seeking approval for Agenda Items 12.02 to 12.53. So bear with me. The first item, 12.02, is a retirement. 12.03 is a resignation, and so is 12.04 and 12.05. Unpaid leaves are at 12.06 to 12.08. 12.09 is a revised contract. 12.11, 10 through 12.11 are transfers. 12.12 is the appointment of a elementary school teacher. 12.13 is the appointment of a high school English teacher. 12.14, appointment of a preschool teacher. 12.15, an elementary nurse. 12.16, the appointment of a biology teacher in high school, at the high school level. 12.17, the appointment of a new Spanish teacher. 12.18, the part-time media secretary, center secretary appointment. 12.19 is the appointment of a part-time high school arts teacher. We have the appointment of 12.20, a custodian at Thomas Sharp School. And 12.21 is the transfer of Camilla Hinson from the district ESL teacher to the Sharp School principal. 12.22 is the appointment of a long-term substitute and replacement teacher, as well as 12.23 through 12.24. 12.25 is the appointment of elementary permanent substitutes. 12.26, the point, the approval of 2022, 20, I'm sorry, 2023 and 2024 course overload for one teacher. 12.27 through 12.28 are student-teacher practicum placements. 12.29 is district stipends for webmaster and its, and an assistant test coordinator. 12.30, child study team stipends. 12.31 are next school year's elementary non-athletic stipends, and non-athletic stipends for the middle school at 12.32. And there's a whole lot, oh, and 12.33 is the high school non-athletic stipends, and that's a whole page and a half. 12.34, the appointment of athletic head coaches. 12.35, curriculum development projects at the elementary school level and preschool level. 13 point, I'm sorry, 12.36, curriculum and development projects from 6th to 8th grade at the middle school. And 12.37 are curriculum development projects at, yes, the high school level. 12.38, preschool and kindergarten screening appointments for summer staff. 12.39 is the 2023 ESY program. There's a revision to the schedules for the summer. 12.40, ESY alternative, which we just mentioned at Camp Sunnyside, the appointment of one-on-one assistance. 12.41, a revised list of the summer CS, child study team staff. 12.42 is allowing for a child study team to do evaluations in the summer. 12.43 is the appointment of summer CST staff in Oakland. 12.44 is seeking approval for, for people assisting with the transition camp for our rising sixth and ninth graders. 12.45 is approving summer marching band staff, Ms. Ludwig. 12.46 is the appointment of staff for summer wellness. 12.47, the appointment of school security on an as-needed basis in the summer. 12.48, the appointment of a driver for summer buildings and grounds workers. 12.49 is additional substitutes and tutors for the '23, '24 school year. 12.50 is the travel expense budget. I believe there's one item on that, unless it was amended. 12.23 allows superintendent to offer employment contracts to successful candidates during the summer, and we will be notified at the next public meeting, so we don't stop progress. Hopefully we'll be approving a French teacher, as a side note. 12.52 is Ms. Coleman's contract. And 12.53 is allowing for recognition of retiring faculty, and in this case, it's Mr. Dorney who's retiring. He was at Item 13.02, and we'd like to thank him for his service. And right now, I'm seeking approval for Items 12.02 through 12.54. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve said items. And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members?
I know it was brought up during the curriculum presentation. Could, I guess, maybe a little more information about what the crosswalks exactly are that are being developed in 12.35, 12.36? Just, just curious what, like, the actual crosswalks are.
The cross, is it on? The crosswalks are being developed this year over the summer to take items from our curriculum and put them in a crosswalk document, K to 12. So we will be highlighting Amistad, Holocaust, diversity, equity, inclusion, climate change as part of the crosswalks. And within them, we are highlighting resources that teachers can use in terms of lesson planning. We are highlighting instructional texts, read-alouds, articles, websites that are interactive, both for students to use independently, as well as websites that would be used to provide instruction. And they are being developed by our teachers in concert with some PLC leaders and supervisors. There will be collaboration across grade span, so that's why they are put into categories of K2, 35, and so on and so forth. And like I said, the goal is to have those documents readily available, so you would not have to sift through our actual curriculum if you wanted to find out exactly how those areas are going to be addressed. areas are going to be addressed.
So to restate it, what I heard there was that it's a way to develop like a resource for the teachers, for all the teachers to be able to say, hey, like, I need more information or I want resources to teach these topics.
Absolutely.
And then, is it also just like a way to ensure that we're hitting all of the things that we need to hit, basically, as well?
Sure, it does do that as well. But I think more brings to light all of the work that we have been doing. That is just not as easily, you know, accessible, I think, without sifting through, like I said, the multiple units of study we might have in a given content area.
So the idea isn't necessary to change anything, per se, but more of to document and record what we have, you know, like index what we have?
Yes, with enhancements. So obviously, you know, one focus is on read-aloud texts and excerpts that we could use to provide instruction, and those are ever-evolving. So obviously, authors come out with new material all the time, so we'll be highlighting our most updated resources in terms of that, along with other things that are already being used in our curriculum.
Awesome, thank you.
Sorry, real quick. This is a resource for, certainly for teachers and schools, and for us to be able to see, but also available for families that might be curious about how it's infused throughout the years for their children as well?
Yes, absolutely. The goal of this document is to be, it will actually be in our curriculum housing platform, and it will look different from our typical curriculum template. It's a collaborative effort in terms of what it looks like as a result of the work with PLC leaders and supervisors. But we want it to be accessible for everyone, so if there are questions or concerns. And also, we will eventually have another Q-SAC. It's a great time. And so it'll be very easy for the auditors to be able to find that information as well, since they are state mandates.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments from board members? She might as well stay there, just in case. All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan, Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Delkis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes.
Moving on to Section 13, Culture, Climate, and Policy Committee. Ms. Severino?
Culture, Climate, and Policy Committee reviews all updates and changes of district policies and regulations. 13.03 is a second read of the policy 3460, the high school graduation policy, which changes the number of, sorry, thank you, from 130 to 120. So that is a second read of that policy. So seeking approval of item 13.03.
Motion to approve said item. And a second?
Second.
Question or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan, Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Delkis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes.
Moving on to Section 14, Miscellaneous. The 14.01 is the previous month's HIB report. Ms. Coleman, can I ask you to do the sidebar ones for everyone?
Yes, so bear with me. So 14.02 is just extending, post-COVID, we did a sidebar with the CEA. The, I'm looking at Mr. Pence, but the contract provision for summer teaching had a formula in it to derive the hourly rate, and we felt it was low. So basically, teachers got more doing lunch duty than coming in and teaching on the summer. So we amended it, the hourly rate, to be the same formula used on how we figure out their hourly rate during the school day when they do lunch duty. So we're just extending it through the summer, because, and then if we want to negotiate it with the CEA, when their contract's up at the end of the year, then we can do that. The next one is a one-time contract allowance. We had a staff member that was transferring from one job within the district to another one, different job entirely. And she had experience on her resume that granted her additional years of experience, thus additional money. Contract says that type of thing is negotiated at the time of hire. So we did a one-time contract allowance, because this was the team that the administrators, this was the person, the administrative team, that's who they really wanted for this job. And it was an internal candidate. So it's a one-time allowance, it's not setting precedent, but it's allowing us to just move somebody in the district to another job, basically a promotion. And 14.04 is just clarifying some language, but the Buildings Services Association regarding their uniforms, which is fine. And then the other one was 4th of July, we added it to their contract. So the way it works in the district is after the 4th of July holiday, we go to four-day work weeks, right? But it's kind of weird at Buildings and Grounds, it didn't specify the week after the 4th of July, so obviously, 4th of July is on a Tuesday, right? So then everybody was confused, why are we off on Friday, or are we not on Friday? So the week after the 4th of July, to make it kind of a little more clear. So just kind of clarifying that language, so that everybody can book their vacations. And that's it.
Thank you very much. So we're looking for approval of items 14.01 to 14.04. Is there a motion? And a second? Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan, Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Delkis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes. We've come to our second opportunity for public participation. I believe everyone was here when I read the first document, so just the public's reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. And in fairness to all that wish to speak, there's a strict five-minute time limit. Mr. Craig will be keeping time for me again, and he'll give you a 30-second warning. Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Wayne Rossi, 114 East Palmer Ave. So I'm here for the second comment on behalf of a group of citizens who've put forward a petition asking the Board of Education to end the shared services agreement between the school district and the police department, which funds the position of a school liaison officer. The evidence-based reasons that have been determined for this are, one, we believe that the cost of an SLO is not the CST's, the Collingwood School District's financial responsibility. Two, that student, school-based policing is ineffective, dangerous, and inequitably harms students of color, disabled students, and LGBTQ+ students. And three, that there are better, more effective tools for addressing school safety. These tools are available to the Collingwood School District. If the Board is unable to or unwilling to do this, we do encourage a number of amendments to the current process. One, that the cost of the SLO should be borne by the CPD. Two, is that the SLO should not be permitted to carry firearms while on campus. Three, is that the SLO is held to a high standard of transparency, reporting, and accountability. And fourth, that the students and families should be provided extensive education on rights when encountering police officers, and students will be protected from interrogation. I know this has come up multiple times over the last several board meetings. I do think that there is a feeling that this process was rushed, and that the time to have a fair discussion about this involving the community has not been sufficient, and that, if nothing else, I think that the items that the petition has are safety rails around this becoming something that I know a number of board members have spoken in what I think is good faith, that they don't want to see as far as cops in schools. But I think that there is a lot of strong feeling, particularly about having an armed officer on campus. And I think that that particularly is an issue. I know students have spoken about it, and I know parents are very concerned about that. So as I've said in the past, I do think that there's room to have this discussion, but I do feel strongly that we need to terminate or significantly amend this process. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Finkel, 916 Park Ave. I'm here to speak about the same topic. I know that, do I have to press a button, or? I might be, okay. Okay. So I'm Rebecca Finkel, 916 Park Ave. I'm here to speak on the same topic. I know that the details of the partnership haven't been finalized, but I'm concerned that the district would consider an intervention that, number one, should already be provided by the police department at no extra cost to the school, and, number two, doesn't show strong evidence of improving safety or preventing harm to students. Per Article 2 of the New Jersey Department of Education Uniform State Memorandum of Agreement Between Education and Law Enforcement Officials, and I quote, "Each law enforcement agency having patrolled jurisdiction shall designate one or more persons to serve as a liaison to appropriate local and county school offices. The chief school administrator of each school district must designate the school safety specialist as the school liaison, as the school district liaison with law enforcement." So as I and others understand this, the Collingwood Police Department should already provide the service at no additional cost, and the district should be appointing a school safety specialist to work with law enforcement. So why would our limited school budget be spent on a service that is already supposed to be provided? Schools in the U.S. spend about $15 a year to engage police. SRO programs are the fastest-growing area in law enforcement. Yet data from the last 20 years show that SROs do not reduce student injuries or deaths or prevent school shootings. What the evidence does show is that bringing law enforcement into schools increases suspension and expulsion rates and arrests of children. Schools with SROs arrest 3.5 as many children as schools that don't have police. In New Jersey, there is an 86% increase in student arrests between 2013 and 2016. If that sounds like the system working, it's not. Studies show that the increase in punishment during the rapid expansion of SRO programs is not proportionate to rates of student behavior that could warrant these punishments. What's actually happening is that student behavior is being criminalized, and educators and administrators are increasingly relying on law enforcement to manage their classrooms. And which students are receiving these punishments? Black students, Hispanic students, disabled students, queer and trans students. According to the Department of Education's Office of Civil Rights, black students in this country are arrested at three times the rate of white students. Disabled students are arrested at three times the rates of students without disabilities. This is in addition to existing discipline disparities, which see black and disabled students suspended and expelled at rates more than two to three times the rate of their enrollment. Data from the Office of Civil Rights show that these discipline disparities occur in our district at rates that sometimes exceed the national average. Children exposed to this type of exclusionary punishment lose opportunities to learn and are alienated from the school community. They are more likely to have future encounters with police and less likely to graduate high school or enroll in college. A 2019 study of over 2.5 million public school students found that a 10% increase in a school district's security expense ratio is associated with a 3.6% decline in high school graduation. In three years of their district funding police partnerships, the likelihood of enrolling in a four-year college declined for these students by 7%. It's troubling that the proposed SLO agreement wouldn't mention these massive discipline disparities while proposing an intervention that threatens to make them worse. I work in public health, and there are two fundamental principles that I believe apply here. One is that inequities such as these are the result of structural and systemic problems. What is the district doing at the structural level to address school climate and our discipline disparities, rather than paying for an armed officer who will need extensive training in order to understand the scope of the problem? And two, it is the community that should tell you what their problems are and the solutions that they're willing to consider. Did the district solicit information from the teachers, students, or parents before deciding to engage with the police? Is that what they want, and is that how they'd like to spend the budget? I'm joining my community members in this advocacy, because they are actively surveying and informing the community about these topics. This type of outreach is explicitly recommended by major educational organizations, as well as state and federal agencies, before bringing armed police officers into schools. I am disappointed that the district did not do this before proposing the partnership, but it is not too late. Please consider taking a step back to figure out what is really best for this community. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brenda Borkowski. I live at 106 Harvard Avenue. First of all, thank you to Rebecca Finkel for that masterful summary of a really extensive and deep dive into data that she performed to bolster this community petition. So there's all that evidence, and I have a lot of citations, and I have a lot of wonderful research and studies for you all, but I know that you know, that I know, you've already seen all that. You know this. I know that you know this, but it's happening anyway. So what I'd like to focus on for my time at the microphone is how to mitigate the harm that I think could come of this, if you're going to make this decision despite the evidence. So Section 3 of the petition states, "There are better, more effective tools for addressing school safety, and those tools are available to Collingwood School District. Evidence-based tools that have been proved to effectively prevent violence include creating an inclusive school culture, promoting mental health services, and utilizing restorative justice practices. The funds that are earmarked for the SLO are better used to develop culturally responsive curriculum, practices, and policies, thereby creating an inclusive school culture. CST should employ a position such as a director of school culture to support a restorative justice program. This position's responsibilities could include providing a mandatory annual training for all administrative and staff on a model such as the Collaborative and Proactive Solutions Model, which is described in this document. Creating, reviewing annually the implementation of transparent school-wide policies, procedures, and systems for responding to challenging student behaviors, and support teachers in their efforts to manage these behaviors using the Collaborative and Proactive Solutions Model. Rewriting district-wide code of conduct policy to align with current restorative justice work." There's an example in here from another school district. "Rewriting the school-based code of conduct to align with restorative justice practices." And another example is also in this document. Then, the last part of this petition lists amendments that the community would like to see enacted, should the contract continue. First, the CPD will take on the cost for the SLO. According to the MOA, there's no financial agreement required, and all training for police officers comes directly from the police budget. Next, the SLO should be prohibited from carrying firearms on any campus or in any district building unless it has been confirmed that another firearm is present on campus or in a district building. Transparency and accountability measures for the SLO administrators and staff will be clearly defined and made public facing. Our expectations for reporting: First, that the SLO will collect data on why the police are being called to the schools and reported to the Board monthly. Also, that the SLO will inform the Board how the responses were handled and what police intervention was required. Also, administration should be using the data collected to reduce the number of calls to the police. Such as, code of conduct violations are not an acceptable reason to call the police. Police should only be called for a crisis. Code of conduct needs to be handled by the school administrative team. Also, administrative teams that are unable to follow protocol need to be put on an action plan and given additional coaching from direct supervisors. Next, there will be a clear chain of command and accountability reporting. The SLO should report to a district administrator and be held accountable by the district administrator. The SLO contract can be terminated at any time for any reason. Also, students and families will be made aware of their rights. First, names and contact information will be provided immediately for students and parents' guardians to report when there is an incident involving the SLO on campus. Second, the SLO administrative staff are not allowed to interrogate students for any reason without a parent, legal guardian, and/or legal representation present. There is, in this document, a proposed violence prevention method that we recommend implementing. Time is up, okay. I have, in my last 30 seconds, I'll just say that I'm going to present to you a copy of all of the language of the petition, including all of the citations and evidence, and then over 100 signatures from the community. including all of the citations and evidence, and then over 100 signatures from the community.
Hi, this really isn't long. Lisa Steinhauer, Park Avenue. I'm here again to discuss the entrance age policy. I personally went through the new process with my child after two years in the Collingwood Pre-K program to delay entry into kindergarten. Unfortunately, there are no options for my child other than kindergarten in the district, and my request was denied. The process has weighed heavily on my family as we navigate the next steps for our child. We are moving forward with delaying kindergarten for our child because we believe that is the best option, but this is a risk. I agree there needs to be a system in place, but the system should promote collaboration between the school and parents where information from both parties is equally weighted. There has been a lot of talk about meeting a child where they are, and that should apply to any child going through the registration process with the district. If a child comes to the district to enroll in kindergarten because they have not yet completed kindergarten, the immediate response to the family should not be that the school district is placing the student in first grade. These situations could easily be caught by adding a box on the registration form for the family to share the last completed grade level. This would allow for an appeal process to begin immediately, rather than the parent being told their child will need to skip a grade and then self-initiate the appeal process by providing extensive documentation to the school for a chance to have their circumstance considered. Though, the preferred solution would be to amend Policy 5112 to allow students to continue to the next available grade without a risk of skipping a grade level. I want to acknowledge the effort put into the posted FAQs after the last board meeting. Thank you for that, and thank you to the board members for the listening session after the last board meeting. We discussed many helpful points to include in the FAQs, and I hope they will continue to be updated. And I also hope that we can find a way to improve the entrance age process prior to registration opening next year. Finally, on a separate note, I want to show support for and stand with my fellow community members, urging the Board to terminate the contract to fund the school liaison officer or adopt the amendments put forth in the submitted petition. While a separate issue, there are parallels in how members of the community are feeling unheard and unseen by the Board. It was encouraging to hear the Board discussing ways to better engage with the community, and I hope there will be an opportunity for written comments when there are issues requiring a vote by the Board. It has been very frustrating to come and talk at the Board once a month. Especially with policy changes, there is a great opportunity to take public written comment between the first and second reading of policies. I hope you'll consider this. Thank you.
Daniela Solano, West Franklin Ave. Can you hear me? As registration for the upcoming 23-24 school year comes to a close, so does the first year of the district's formal entrance age exception process. While we appreciate the FAQ sheet updated in May that has since been uploaded, and we have each personally learned about our child's specific decision, our unease with entrance age policy as it currently stands remains. After what felt like a fruitful and collaborative listening session with two board members, it is clear that CPS does in fact have a gap. There is currently a pipeline that feeds from the Pre-K 4 program directly into kindergarten. When we discussed the outcome of a specific family who applied for an exemption from kindergarten, the ambiguity in what exactly the child would be exempted from was unmistakable. Of course, they were going to be denied an exemption. CPS doesn't have a place for children who have completed two years of pre-K or are already five, except to place them in the kindergarten. And again, for the vast majority of students, that works just fine. However, the fear that this current policy strikes into parents when they're reaching the end of pre-K but their child is showing signs that they aren't ready for kindergarten is palpable, FAQ sheet or not. Amended language in the policy that would allow not just new-to-town residents, but existing residents as well, to continue on to their next grade level without skipping, as they would have in their previous school, would alleviate that fear tremendously. Especially since the district offers no alternative for these students. Either they pursue a transitional kindergarten or additional year of pre-K in a private setting, or they go into kindergarten with the district. But we also don't want to lose sight of equity in this matter, and every family should be able to have the best public education opportunity for their student regardless of their means and resources. CPS used to have a transitional kindergarten before the pre-K program existed. And the success of the current pre-K program notwithstanding, that doesn't mean there won't still be a few students who continue, sorry, who after graduating are still not ready for kindergarten. We want to continue the conversation as to how we can get a TK class up and running with the district, take advantage of the popularity of the pre-K program to serve as a catchment for more students who would potentially benefit from a TK year and are willing to work alongside the Board to gather documentation or research, or however we can be of use. On a separate and personal note, I would also like to support the petition just admitted, calling into question the use of the school district's budget to finance the new SLO position. Given all the evidence provided in the petition, and I feel like widely available elsewhere, it's curious as to why no public comment on this position was brought before it was brought to a vote. This community issue should have been given to the community to discuss. If the contract can no longer be terminated at this point, the four amendments proposed are the very least the Board can enact to ensure the safety of all of our students. Thank you.
Good evening. Dan Smith, 225 Lincoln Avenue. I have a comment today about the elementary school's matriculation policy. I know the expression, "The grass is always greener on the other side." But honestly, as a Tatum parent for the last four years, it just gets harder and harder to temper the jealousy bug the more I learn about the other elementary schools in town. I'm specifically talking about the size of each facility and the disparate enrollment numbers in each school's classes. So for background, Tatum is the only school with two classes per grade level, because they're the only school that has, you know, that many classrooms in the school itself. But the schoolyard isn't any bigger, to say the least. I get it that perfect equality is not achievable, that different spaces are ultimately different spaces. What's frustrating is the wide disparity in enrollment depending on the school. So in Tatum last year, the average third-grade class had 24 kids. By the way, 17 of those were boys and seven were girls. I talked to the district about this, and I wasn't given an exact number to compare it with, but my understanding based on other conversations with other parents tells me that three of the other schools had substantially smaller enrollments for that grade level, and that one of the schools actually had higher than that. So I don't think I'm alone in seeing the problem here, and that I don't think I'm alone in noticing the link between small class size, the available individualized attention per student, and, you know, the student achievement, you know, that goes along with that. Suffice it to say that the identities of the schools involved here are consistent with those traditionally performing at the highest objectively. The disparity here might have been accidental, but it's not acceptable. The district told me that it balances matriculation before kindergarten, and then it doesn't do it again. After that, any new students are assigned to schools based on individual mental or physical accommodations, sibling placement, and then physical catchment, in that order. So the rigidity of that policy ignores simple realities, like certain neighborhoods have more movement in and out of town. Certain neighborhoods are more likely to be able to send their kids to private schools at some point following the initial matriculation. So there's a really simple way to address the post-kindergarten enrollment imbalances. Offer new students a spot at one of the less crowded schools instead of just unilaterally assigning them to an overcrowded school based solely on their address. So to give a quick illustration, I often volunteer to monitor the schoolyards at recess at Tatum. Tatum's principal does an amazing job with what he has. But what he has is three grades on the schoolyard at the same time, so that's six classes. Six classes is as many as most of the other schools have in the entire school. So can you imagine asking all the kids at your school to share the schoolyard at the same time? It's not an easy situation. So I'm just asking, could we try to find a non-intrusive way to at least begin to balance the numbers at the schools? Thank you.
Thank you to everyone who came out for this evening, braving the potential for rain on that note, since it's starting to look darker. Do we have a motion to adjourn this evening? And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, and everyone have a great summer.